Welcome to the September 11 edition of your City Council Redevelopment Agency Meeting. Will you please arise for the pleasure of allegiance?
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll mention that Mayor Rokod is on vacation this week and will not be with us and Council Member Lewis is en route and will be with us soon. So with that, we'll go to number two, changes to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes suggested by the council or by the staff?
Mayor, we would like to move item 11(c) and make it 9d. It's the consideration of awarding a contract for street repair resurfacing 2006-07 project. We'd like to move that from new business to the last item under unfinished business.
Okay, so that'll become 9d.
He's a dog.
All right, then the agenda stands. Moving along to report from closed session, I'll simply report that we did meet in closed session and considered labor negotiations as well as a matter of litigation. We gave advice to council, we took no action. That brings aside item number four, council communications and announcements. Do you think of my fellow council members? Teagle Doherty?
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Lanzon's anniversary of his 29th birthday. How many is it? About 20 or 25?
This is not a good day to be remembering birthdays.
So, our legal counsel, Bob Lanzon, it's his birthday this evening and we certainly appreciate your willingness to spend it with us. I know you probably have better things to do with it.
Are we going to sing to him?
Not at this age.
We're gonna sing?
We're gonna sing?
I...
We're not gonna sing.
Okay.
All right, Councilmember Gazelli?
Nothing on that certain circle.
I'd like to just mention that this morning I attended the county library governing board and a couple of items came up of interest. One was the adoption of the $24 million budget for 2006, 2007. This is for 11 libraries, mostly what we would call small-town libraries, but they're represented by the governing board, one member for each location. There's also a program coming onboard which is rather unique and it's known as One Book, One Community, San Mateo County Reads More. This was a program that was instituted in Seattle. The county librarians took a close look at it. They thought it had a lot of merit for our own county and so they're launching this effort to encourage the county to read the same book during the month of October. And the month is the kite, or rather, the book is the kite runner. Many of you may have read it, especially those in our listening audience, but this will be the book that pulls the county together for the month of October. The author, Khalid Husini, will be present to present and discuss his book on October 19 at the San Mateo Performing Arts Center. So if you're interested in the book and discussing it with the author, mark your calendar for that. I think it's an interesting idea and it's one hopefully that will catch on. It's caught on in many other communities and we would encourage everyone who's interested to participate in this readathon.
Tom, if I might just jump in, I actually have read that book and it is a fascinating book to read, so I would encourage people who are interested in taking the time to pick it up either at the local library or at a local bookstore because it is very interesting in talking about some of the ethnic diversity and things like that.
In Afghanistan, right?
Yep.
Good. Well, we do have complimentary bookmarks for our council members and for those in the audience, you can pick one up at the library and keep that one in mind. Okay, so moving along to reports to council. This, I believe, is the city manager, Mark Weiss, will take us through this.
Mr. Mayor, the report that is included within your packet is entitled "Study Sessions" and what we tried to do is to list a number of study sessions that the city council has expressed an interest in having during the next four to six months within the report. What we thought we would try is to include a study session component within the confines of the city council meeting and so the first study session per se is on tonight's agenda to discuss the franchising and SBWMA franchise agreements and discussions. The thought is that we would have about one study session per month, as it turns out, for each of the next four to six months, that we would try to do it again within the confines of a normal city council meeting. We'd work with the mayor to determine whether or not it was an appropriate form for each of those items that is listed within the report. There's no action being requested this evening. We'd be happy to answer any questions or share any comments that you might have.
So you would, we're starting tonight with South Bayside Waste Management Authority and you would schedule others to follow?
That's correct.
And that'd be based on what the needs are with the group? If there's some prevailing questions that need to come to council, they might be scheduled first?
That's correct. I mean, our tentative schedule would have us in October potentially having two, one being on the Palo Alto Medical Foundation financial implications, a second being on revenue options available to the city. The revenue options is something that we've discussed within the retreat format with the city council. It's one of the items that we are scheduled to have before February. We're hoping to do that in October if at all possible. So we're thinking two in October and then natural resources and potentially building community, that's another item that's elsewhere on tonight's agenda. So there are a number of areas that we think what we would propose anyhow in order to conduct our normal business is set aside about an hour on evenings that we have a study session topic to just have a general discussion without any specific action being taken, but to set aside some time just for general discussion amongst the staff and primarily the city council on those subject areas.
And based upon the discussion, you would proceed to some sort of actionable item and bring that back for detailed presentation?
Correct. In the future, we would bring back, in most cases, some kind of an action at a later date.
Right. Any questions from?
Through the chair. If October you were planning to talk about Palo Alto Medical Foundation, I'm not going to be here for the first meeting in October, so I would, I don't know if there's a choice, but if we could have that in the second meeting, that would be, that would be good. But if not, then that's fine. If it works out the other way, that'd be fine. You mentioned about two different meetings.
It just, it currently is scheduled tentatively as the first meeting in October.
Okay, well, that's fine. I'm not, I'm not, it doesn't revolve, the world doesn't revolve around me. I just mentioned it and if it works out, fine. If it doesn't, then it doesn't. Thank you.
Any others? We do have a speaker on this item, Pat Bell.
Pat Bell, San Carlos. I think both of the task forces asked for a longer study session than one hour and we asked for an ad hoc committee of the council to meet with each task force, maybe more than one for natural resources because it's so big. So I just want to put that in the hopper. We could start with an hour study session, but we would like more than that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Excuse me, through the chair, I apologize for being late. The only thing I wanted to add is I think ad hoc meetings with some of the commissions and committees is a great way to move things forward and bring things back to council because it's so difficult to schedule these things. So just in general, I just wanted to mention to council that from my perspective, I think when we can send a couple of council members either to one of the commission meetings or for a special ad hoc meeting that we can keep commissions and committees, you know, sort of on project and moving forward and as long as we're sort of cross-communicating that, that would be a good thing. So I would be in favor of trying to make that happen on a more regular basis.
Okay.
Thank you.
The only thing I would like to add is I know Mark tossed out sort of this whole concept of put an hour on the agenda. I would just like to encourage staff to work with each one of these either commissions or study topics because in some cases it may not take an hour, but in other cases, you know, a couple of hours or the format of a meeting in addition to a council meeting may be in order. So I know you were talking about an hour, but you know, I'm assuming that staff will be flexible in determining what might be required because from the standpoint, I mean, we can all sit up here and talk with each other for an hour and I don't, I don't know how much benefit that would be to staff just to listen to us have some dialogues, but it may, in some cases, may add value.
I think speaking to Pat's comments, it would seem to me that as we review these items, more time may be needed or an ad hoc committee may be needed and I think at the time we have our discussion, that would be a good time to determine that. So I would not assume that we're looking at an hour for each of these, put them to bed and go away. I think this is only the start, but it does give the opportunity for the council to come together and dialogue so that staff knows kind of where we are and a direction to take the process. So I'd rather like the idea. Councilmember Gazelli, how about you?
I agree with what's been set up here and what you said, Vice Mayor Davids. I think it's a, it's start and I agree with Councilmember Lewis also that if we can free up some time on our schedules to meet with these groups, I think it does further the agenda.
And I think we have consensus that we'll move ahead on this matter. Thank you. Next is item 6a, we have consideration of reappointing members to the Bicycle-Pedestrian Advisory Committee or consideration of absorbing said committee into Traffic and Transportation Commission. We'll take the staff report first.
We have on these commissions terms that are expiring and the choice before the city council is whether or not to reappoint and fill the positions with peoples whose terms have not expired and advertise for the positions when terms have expired because of the nine-year term limitation. The alternative that we've listed within the body of the staff report is whether or not the council may wish to consider combining the Traffic and Transportation and the Bicycle-Pedestrian Advisory Commissions. The thinking being that with terms having expired, that there is, or are some members, by the way that the commissions are organized, that have commissioners serving in double capacities and given the way our ordinance currently exists, they accrue time twice as fast under that kind of a scenario and use up a lot of their service time very quickly by serving in that dual capacity, number one. And then secondarily, it takes half time. Thirdly, it, with these two commissions, we find that there's a considerable overlap that bicycles, pedestrians and traffic cars and the like, all are sharing roads, they're all sharing crosswalks and part of the circulation pattern. And so there may be some merits to combining the two commissions into one body covering the full range of circulation within the city. If the council's desire were to move in that direction, the city staff would propose that we would work to review the ordinance, review the term length of the existing members and perhaps report back to the city council with the means by which they might be combined and the membership, at least on an interim basis, perhaps would even be at seven members to accommodate all of the people that currently have time left to serve on their respective commissions. So at this juncture, we're looking to the city council as to what your preference might be with respect to combining the commissions or just filling them as they currently exist.
We do have one speaker on this, Tony Panero with the BPAC.
Good evening, I'm Tony Panero. I'm a member and past chair of the San Carlos Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, which we've called the BPAC. BPAC was formed with the goal of reducing automobile trips within the city by encouraging bicycling and walking. While it's not clear that we've made, we are meeting that goal, we have left our mark on the streets with bike lanes, on the city charter with the transportation element, on the county bike map and in the next draft of the county bike plan, Bicycle Transportation Plan. BPACs in other usually larger cities can count on the active staff support which this committee cannot and I feel this has limited our effectiveness. With this in mind, I feel that considering structural changes to the committee such as presented by city staff makes sense. But first, I'd like to address the composition of the current BPAC. In hindsight, it was an excellent idea to form the committee with representatives from other commissions. Those representatives have been valuable, contributed members of the committee. However, the staff release of city charter is requiring that the time they've served on our committee count as time served on their commission. If in fact this is what the charter requires, the charter should be amended so that those representatives are not penalized for their good work. If the council decides that the role of BPAC is best filled by a reformulated traffic commission, I request that the following four points be considered. First, the city's goal of reducing automobile trips by encouraging walking, bicycling and public transportation should be part of the newly defined commission's charter. Specifically, each project and issue considered by this commission should be evaluated with bicycle and pedestrian accommodation and public transportation in mind. Second, the specific requirements for the State Transportation Development Act, Article 3, known as TDA 3, and for the county association of government's approval process for TDA 3 must be met by this newly formulated committee. If this is done wrong, they will not be met and we will lose the source of funding. And I am not conversant with the specific rules there. There should be a mechanism, number three, there should be a mechanism for continued input from the Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission, the youth commission and the schools. With future commission membership turnover, there should be ongoing council oversight to ensure that the traffic commission continues to provide an adequate voice to bicycling and pedestrian concern. Okay. Finally, and this is kind of stepping away from the recommendation, I personally believe that besides improving access to public transit, the best action the city can take towards the goal of reducing automobile trips is the creation of a Safe Routes to School program having the active support of the traffic commission, the schools, the PTA and the police. If the proposed committee-commission changes result in such a program, I will be overjoyed. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony, and thank you for the good work that you've done on behalf of the BPAC. Any other speakers on this issue? Okay, council members? I have one question I'll just start off with. Parvise, in my, in prior years, it seemed to me there was some need for a BPAC in order to get certain grant funding processed and without a BPAC, we really couldn't do it and that's one reason we formed the BPAC. So if we do the reorganization, what happens to that issue?
The requirement is that the city council, the city has to have a committee to review bicycle plans and approve. Doesn't have to be called Bicycle-Pedestrian Advisory Committee. For example, Traffic Transportation Commission, the title can be modified and changed as long as there's a committee reviewing the plans and recommending to city council that qualifies.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, I actually just had a question. Getting back to this cumulative service, I'm concerned because when we appointed Mr. Mansfield back in 2001, I think at the time, the way, the intention of the ordinance was written is that we didn't want to have any one commissioner serving more than nine years total, so in my mind, he could serve until 2010, which is 2001 plus nine years, but apparently his service on both is now being double counted, is that correct? Do we have other commissions where we're seeing the same issue? Or is this the only one where there's overlap? So for example, does Tom, I know when Tom has been on council, he would sit in on EDAC. Does that mean that cumulative, or is we as council members, if we sit in on some of these subcommittees, that we're starting to add up these additional years?
In a situation like that, you would be serving as a liaison to that particular committee, not as an actual member of that commission. The way the code is currently written, if you sit in the capacity as a commission member, then we are accruing in an aggregate sense those years of service in a duplicate sense so that if you serve one year, you're actually accruing time as if it were two, if you were on two commissions. As I understand it with the BPAC, the membership is comprised of a Parks and Recreation Commissioner, for example, so that person is getting two years of credit for one year of service because they're serving on two different commissions.
Speaking to Inka's comment though, I was on the assumption that when we created BPAC, we created a committee. We didn't create a commission and the committee was basically reporting to the commission in terms of the action. So I did not see that as being a doubling up. It was more a matter of a lesser, a lesser group or a committee. You might want to check that.
That actually, my question is, is a commission and a committee treated equal?
Yes, as long as you've set them up and appointed, they're not really a committee reporting to the transportation, they're their own committee or commission. We amended the code, we amended the code to set up a charter for them and everything in the commission section. It may be however, that it's not your intention that if someone serves on, in a dual capacity, that they're going to have the time double counted. So if in looking at this section and a couple of others, we talked about you want to have that changed, we can change that in the future.
Yeah, I think we should certainly do that because I know, you know, part of the value of some of our commissioners is that they do have the history and they are willing to serve and it would be a shame to, because they're, they have the time or the inclination to serve in more than a single capacity, that they're getting penalized, basically enforced off the commission early simply because they're allowed to, or because they're choosing to do that. My other question for, I guess, Parvise is, because you're staff to both the Traffic and Transportation Commission as well as BPAC, is that correct?
Just myself.
Yes. So have you spoken with either commission or committee and gotten any kind of their feedback? I know we just heard from one of our BPAC committee members, but...
No, as you know, this staff report from the city manager went to the packet last Wednesday and I had an email from the chair of BPAC, wanted to talk about based on their agenda tomorrow night, the terms and expiration to discuss and I had a call from another member. He thought merging it probably not a good idea, but that's all. But tomorrow is on their agenda to discuss tomorrow night.
Sorry, I'm, you said that they thought that that was not a good idea or was?
One member thought that merging the two committees and commission, not a good idea.
Was not a good idea, okay. And we have another committee member who sounds like it would be in support of it. So there obviously needs to be some discussion, I think.
And to that point, was there, has the Traffic Transportation Commission considered this idea?
No, they have not.
Okay.
Well, we really haven't done a lot of work on it because we didn't know if there'd be any interest on the city council at all in the concept, so we thought we'd bring it to you because the timing would be appropriate given the fact that there are terms that have expired.
I think my, I mean, my position would be, I generally would be in favor if it's agreeable to the both committee and commissions to actually pull them together because I know in the past, Traffic and Transportation often has been, the meetings have been canceled for lack of agenda items and it seems like a lot of this stuff could be pulled together and help get some consistency in terms of looking at overall pedestrian and vehicular safety within the city because I do think that they are interrelated. However, I don't know that I would, I think I'd like to have the committees and commissions at least have an opportunity to talk about it and get some feedback to me as a council member and perhaps to this body before we formally take some action on this. But overall, I would be in favor of possibly merging the two, although I think I would be very cautious about increasing the number of members to seven because I know in the past, just historically, we've had commissions that are seven members and then seven almost becomes like too many and so very quickly they've gone back to the five member just because it's, the meetings tend to be a lot of dialogue and it's harder to get consensus with seven members.
Brad?
Another question for staff. Mr. Panero makes one point where I think the implication is that perhaps some of the bike and pedestrian issues could get greater support from staff if they'd merged into one commission and I was just wondering, either Mr. Weiss or Mr. Parvise, excuse me, Mr. Mark Terry, how you felt about that point? Is it true they might get more support if there's not a sort of a, you know, twice as much work to do, so to speak?
I believe it does because I know of some projects for the future that if we take the project separately to BPAC and separately to TNT Commission, which we have to, we may have a different opinion coming from the two committees, but if they're together, the members of the Traffic Transportation Commission can hear BPAC members' concerns at the same time. Hopefully, they all come to a consensus and recommend the same idea.
From my vantage point, there's a little bit of a delicate balance here. If by combining the commissions, and by the way, I agree with Ms. Doherty that if we could get the commission's feedback on this, first and foremost, if we had their support, that that would be something that would be important to check with both commissions. The other thing that, again, the delicate balance for me is that, to me, if by combining these commissions, it would actually enhance our ability to be reactive to it and enhance the ability of these commissions and staff to work together, perhaps if there's not two commissions that we can get to decisions perhaps a little bit faster or in a more focused manner, that maybe there's a little bit more of a united vision between the two commissions, which would go to one of Mr. Panero's other points, which is that the bike and pedestrian emphasis within the way we approach traffic and transportation would be more integrated into our vision than, from that vantage point, I would really support it because I think that that's, to me, I think, not to speak for council, but it feels like a value from council that we've heard in many different discussions we've had. It's certainly in my experience, a value of the community and I think it could be a real strength if we incorporate that as a vision in the traffic and transportation. And I also agree with Mr. Panero that not just with this commission, but in general, I think council, if we can help guide traffic and transportation, this is a core value of the cities that we really want to see incorporated into that vision, I think it could be a real strength. So on that basis, again, some buy-in from the commissions and the fact that this would actually maybe enhance this effort in a more integrated vision, I would certainly support that.
I concur with Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember Teagle Doherty. One question I had, perhaps to the city attorney, as was mentioned, I would also support beyond what they said, change in the, I'm not sure it's ordinance code or whatever, to eliminate the double counting, but having said that, how does that affect the current members of the, of the groups?
If you want to make it retroactive, you can make it retroactive. It's really a policy issue.
Okay, I didn't know, I just thought I'd ask the question, so, okay, we can make it retroactive. No, I think Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember Teagle Doherty have pretty much... No, I think Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember Teal Doherty have pretty much said what I would be saying.
And I have nothing to add, so why don't we turn this back to staff? And we have two items. One is a matter of reworking our council-commission process so that we're not double counting for those who choose to double serve. And secondly, take a close look at the transportation and traffic, as well as the BPAC, talk to the committees, get a feel for them as to whether this can work well. I rather think that it can, if the parties are agreed, because I do see some value in being at the same table, discussing the same issues. So we'll turn that back to you, and we'll wait for a report. All right, we move right along to number seven, public comment. This is a 10-minute period set aside for comment, maximum of two minutes apiece for items that are not on the posted agenda. And I have a speaker's card from Pat Bell.
Pat Bell, San Carlos. On this day, when we remember and honor the many brave firefighters who died at the World Trade Center five years ago, I again want to express my support of our brave firefighters, any one of whom would risk his life to save anyone of yours. They are, they've been the stepchildren for several years. Their budget has been cut and cut and cut. Now, we have an assessment going out at the end of the month, and we're just now starting to see some literature, three weeks before the fact. And I've heard all the reasons, excuses, we had to do this first, we had to do that first, we had to do the other thing first. But if you were running, any one of you were running for office, you would not allow your campaign to not start until three weeks before the election. I mean, it's just crazy. And people who volunteered six months ago to work on this campaign have never been contacted, including an experienced fundraiser who's been waiting for the call. So I want to see a real whiz-bang three weeks. I'm very disappointed, embarrassed, by the way our firefighters have been treated. And if this measure loses, I think the fact that the campaign wasn't organized, funded, ready to go on July 1 has to be a part of it. And I don't want that to happen. I think we have to really work in the next three weeks to make up for the fact that we didn't start three months ago. These guys have worked and worked and worked without much support, without financial support, with browning out stations, with cutting back on equipment, and they've stuck around. There's been very little attrition, aside from the ones we fired. And even those guys have come back. So let's really support them and let people know, the people who haven't been involved, that this assessment has to pass. The fact that Mr. Grisilli is the only member of the Fire Board here tonight should not be, you should not take that to mean that I'm directing my comments to him. I am not. I appreciate, I watched him work over the last nine months on this, and I know how much he's put into it. So I'm not talking to him, I'm talking to the city of San Carlos. The fact that this, that the firefighters have not been a priority, and they deserve it. They deserve our appreciation. They shouldn't have to go into a building and die in order to be appreciated, although they would do that if they had to. I have a friend who works at Bonnie Bray Terrace, and she was there in the middle of the night when they were carrying the elderly people down flights of stairs. So they do do it.
Thank you, Pat. I have a speaker's slip from Brian Randall. Brian, I can't, you want to talk at this issue?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, council members. Being it's 9/11, I would like to add a comment here. I wish to thank our local firemen and police officers, who always live knowing that next call could be their last. You and I don't start our day with that knowledge, do we? The firefighters and the police officers have my respect and my admiration. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to item eight, approval of consent calendar. These items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request items to be removed for separate action. And in that case, those items will be moved to the last part of the agenda. So are there any items at the council level for removal? Seeing none, staff, from the public? Anyone from the public? All right.
I would move approval of consent calendar items A, A through E, AF, which is adoption of ordinance number 1376, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 13.05, sewer relief valves, and 8G.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Teal Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Davids?
Yes. Brings us to number nine, the unfinished business. First item is the sidewalk ordinance amendments.
Mr. Mayor, we are back with the revised sidewalk ordinance. What we tried to do was alleviate your concern about that area of the street that's unimproved. It's just dirt. You know, somewhere between the paved sidewalk and the, this paved street and the sidewalk or the property line or the driveway, that's the area we're excluding. That's not where our primary area of claims are, anyway. We're primarily interested in the paved sidewalk. And those improved areas, from let's say the curb in, for example, where planter stones have been placed, or other improvements in the area. So with that revision, it's basically the same as it was before, and someone did point out that we have the driveway in section, in the definition of sidewalk, the word driveway should be moved to after the word sidewalk.
Right. I might add...
May I answer any questions?
I did meet with the city attorney and staff regarding this after our last lengthy discussion, and we have an ordinance now that I can approve. So I'll turn it to my fellow council members and see if they have any questions.
I actually only had, if I may, through the chair, only two questions in section, I guess it's 12.04.020, C and D. In both cases, they reference the city engineer as being the person that makes the determination as to what materials or what manner that is to be repaired. Generally, I know in cases like this, we've said the city engineer or their designee. Would it be consistent with other ordinances to add languages of, or his designee to both C and D where it references the city engineer?
That'd be fine.
Because I know Parvise is a busy man. So with other than that, I appreciate the work that's gone into this, because I know that this has been an area of some confusion. And I think this is a nice step towards cleaning up the language and making it much more clear.
Then you'd like to move for approval.
Can I...
Yes, sir. Go ahead. No, Councilmember Lewis, go ahead.
The one thing that you just clarified in the presentation, Mr. Lanzo, which I was just going to ask the question, whether or not it should be added to the definition section, which is the difference between improved area and unimproved area. Now, just because, you know, I live in a street that has an unimproved area, and I'm like, so that was one question, whether or not we should, as long as we're doing the definition, should we say improved area is how you described it? So that's just one thing to consider. I wouldn't hold this up, because we need to move things along, but that would be one thing to consider. And then the only other thing, do we ever add a diagram to any of these? It seems like we're doing a lot of definitions about between the curb and this and that and so forth. That could be pretty much summed up with a fairly simple diagram with a few arrows.
To my recollection, we don't really have any diagrams in the city code. I know when they have a standard section of streets, standard section of sidewalk, there are plans, official city plans and specs for those. Is that right?
Correct.
And I agree with the concept, that if we could put it in, a picture's worth a thousand words.
I was going to say.
It would clarify for sure. But maybe staff could prepare a handout, so that at City Hall, we'd have a handout, that anybody comes in is interested about sidewalk, we can show them pictorially what is meant by this section.
I certainly think for the public, just for me, just reading through this, it's like I'm going, okay, so now the sidewalk area, it takes a little concentration to get through it. I think it'd be great if we could, I guess I would say, I'd encourage us to come up with a simple diagram that could accompany this if people come in with questions, because I think it would help clarify.
Yeah, generally, the public doesn't reference the municipal code that often, in my experience.
Well, when we send out the notices that you have to repair your sidewalk, and it's going to cost X amount of dollars, I mean, there are people that do contact City Hall and each and every year. So probably, when you send a response, you could send a copy of what's intended by the sidewalk repair and what area is covered. So we could do that. I don't recommend expanding on the definition of, by improved, we mean the public improvement in the area that's between the paved street and the sidewalk.
It certainly references the improved area, so I would go along with that. It's just my own confusion.
Councilmember Grisilli?
The only concern I have, and I'm certainly willing to vote for this tonight also, but if someone is walking up my street, and believe it or not, a lot of people walk up Crestview, I have no idea why they do, and they fell on the side...
Because they can.
Pardon me?
Because they can.
Because they can. I guess so. I'll have to work on that. And if they fell on the sidewalk, I think their first thought would be, it's not in front of my house, it's the city sidewalk. That's the first thought that would come to a number of people. Maybe not, but that's what it would be. So they would say, they would go to the city and say, I'm filing a claim. And we would now say, after we pass this ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong in this logic along the way, no, it's the homeowner's responsibility.
What we would, that's probably the way it'll work. I mean, a claim will be filed either through the attorney, an attorney representing the person.
Right, well then, knock on my door and file a claim against me, and I'll go...
We'll contact you and say, please contact your insurance company.
Right. But I'll get either a call from the city or from another attorney, and I'll go, what? In other words, the information on this, I mean, we can pass this ordinance, and it's wonderful, and it's law, but are we going to do any kind of a...
I understand.
A public thing to identify that everyone now owns a home in San Carlos could be liable for someone falling on their sidewalk, which yesterday they weren't. I just bring that up to my fellow council members, it's a thought process.
Actually, all the homeowners are currently liable as well. This is just removing the city's liability. Anybody who trips on your sidewalk because you're required to maintain it, the homeowner could be equally liable. However, the city usually has the deeper pocket. But we will, in answer to your other question, be using the grant money that we get from ABAG as a result of passing these risk management measures to do a public information campaign, notify all the property owners in the city of the change of what their responsibilities are.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just, again, learn something new every day. And like I said, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of the information on it. When we pass these ordinances and laws, sometimes I think we might do it in a vacuum, and there's some, some real-world, should we say, items that are going to come up. Thank you.
I think it's a good point, that even when we send a notification from either ABAG, which is our insurance adjuster, when they contact homeowners, should probably have a small packet referencing the ordinance, referencing what they should do in terms of contacting their insurance company. It's their sidewalk, and they have an obligation to maintain it, and if someone gets hurt on it, they have the potential for liability.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm willing to vote on this.
Okay, so just to summarize, to be perfectly clear, we're not transferring liability to the homeowner, we're simply clarifying that, through the ordinance, that the homeowner does have liability for the sidewalk and, or the sidewalk area, and that the city is not liable for a typical trip and fall.
No, that's not, we should probably go back to the original memo that you were given on July 24. And it points out that the city has the ability, under the Streets and Highways Code, to require a homeowner to maintain the sidewalk and repair it. That's why we send out a notice. It's our right of way. It's, quote, "our sidewalk," but the state gives the ability of the city to send out a notice and say, repair the sidewalk. If the homeowner hasn't repaired the sidewalk, or doesn't repair the sidewalk, and someone just trips and falls on a sidewalk, currently under state law, the city has liability. If you have an ordinance in place, there's been case law, San Jose in particular, that allowed the city, allowed that city, and now other cities are doing it, to pass an ordinance, and by that ordinance, indicate that the liability for that defective sidewalk should be with the homeowner, as opposed to with the city, who usually doesn't have any idea that there's a defective sidewalk there until someone trips and falls and sends in a claim. So this does transfer liability. Up until now, we have only been able to go and offset liability on a sidewalk claim where there have been trees or something off the sidewalk that comes from someone's property and has made, let's say it was a large oak tree, and it was the homeowner's oak tree, and that caused the sidewalk to buckle. In those cases, we've been able to offset that liability. And these claims are, overall, I think we pointed out in July, when the report was to you, they had up to, sometimes up to half a million dollars over a two- or three-year period. And that, I mean, we have a self-insured retention of up to $100,000. We've got a couple of claims going now where, you know, people suffer severe injuries just with a trip and fall, you break an arm or whatnot. That translates into a personal injury case, that can cost the city a lot of money to defend and pay off. These are claims that would otherwise be covered by someone's homeowner's insurance. And that's what the other cities have done. I think we pointed out last time, too, that San Jose, Belmont, Foster City, Tiburon, Millbrae, Los Gatos, Benicia, I mean, I could, there's a whole list of cities that have passed these ordinances. And ABAG, our insurance carrier, if you will, has encouraged, as part of risk management for all the cities, to adopt such an ordinance.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions for Bob? We do have a public comment from Pat Bell.
Pat Bell, San Carlos. I would just ask that, when the city does repair the sidewalks, that they do what Parvise talked about, flatten it out, put in the root barrier, do the job so that it doesn't have to be redone in a few years. The one in front of my house was done four years ago, it's now sprayed with orange paint again. And it was not dug down, it was not flattened, there was no root barrier. I stood there and watched them do it. They scraped down two or three inches, they put in their forms, they poured the concrete right over the tree roots, and here we are again, four years later, sprayed with orange. The other thing is, it doesn't make sense to me to go out, spray the worst of the worst trip hazards, the really big ones, and then have the guy come back, spray the three-quarter inch ones, then decide that you're only going to do the worst of the worst. Well, now you've sprayed the little ones orange. You might as well put a sign out there that says, sue me if you trip, because I already know this is a trip hazard, but I'm not going to fix it. That doesn't make any sense to me. If you're only going to do the worst of the worst, spray those orange, and don't highlight the trip hazards that you're not going to fix. I mean, that just made me nuts. The guy, the little, the summer intern with the orange paint was out there three times, for the big ones, to add the little ones, and then to subtract the little ones. And now they're going to do the whole thing, because I wrote an email and said, this doesn't make any sense. But, you know, that kid only makes eight twenty-five an hour, but he didn't need to do it three times.
Thank you, Pat. The last staff to be guided by your comments. Any other at the council level?
I would move introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 12.04, sidewalk and driveway construction repair, with the, just modification of the language, section 12.04.020, D, or C and D, to allow for the city engineer or his designee in both of those paragraphs.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Teal Doherty, and second by Councilmember Grisilli. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Teal Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davids?
Yes. Okay, we're moving right along to item 9B. This is a discussion... This is Discussion of Adding a Strategic Plan Objective to Conduct a Study Session to Review Recommendations for the Building Community Task Force Report, which was February 15, 2007. Oh, hello, Donna.
Hello, good evening, Vice Mayor Davis, members of the council. This is to request counsel at a study session, a strategic plan objective to conduct a study session to review the recommendations from the Building Community Task Force Report by February 2007. This would be consistent with council direction to conduct a study session on the Natural Resources Task Force Report, which was determined at the August 14 City Council and Department Head Retreat, in which the six-month strategic plan objective was developed. The task force was convened in the Enhancing the City of Good Living Project that was initiated as under Mayor Inka Tiggledordi's term in office, and the recommendations have been made through the committee forum, and now it's time to review and determine direction for the city to take on those recommendations.
Okay, any questions for Donna? We did, incidentally, have this listed under the first item that we covered, which was to hold study sessions to start the process of reviewing these major items. So that was done under 5A. And I presume that would satisfy the need to get the process started for this report?
Actually, you know what, I think what they're asking for is more direction about whether or not we want to consider this and discuss it in a study session as a full council, or to create a subcommittee of the council to review the recommendations and then kind of report back to the full council for discussion, is my understanding. Is that consistent with the staff report?
That's correct. Through the chair, when we talked about this at the last council meeting, one thought was to make it very similar to the Natural Resources Objective within the strategic plan, and to just have a study session in response to the report that was given to us. At that time, however, the concept came up whereby we might have subcommittees of the council meeting directly with the Natural Resources Building Community, actually, the Building Community Task Force in this particular case. And so we outlined that as an option for the council, but as the recommendation had forwarded, the thought that we have a study session on this, and then determine from that study session whether or not we wanted to have a special meeting, whether or not we wanted to reconvene the Building Community Task Force, or whatever other action that the city council might deem appropriate. We thought that the original, or that the first thing that we should do is to have that study session on a city council agenda, to just discuss whether or not, what form the council would like to move this forward.
Yeah, my preference, I think, would be to create a smaller committee of the council to review them, because what I've found in the past is that sometimes these task force think outside the box, which is wonderful, but they also think outside of the budgetary box. And it might be nice to be able to work with staff, to go through the list of recommendations, and to be able to come up with a finite set to start to bring forward to this council that would be able to be supported by staff, both in terms of staff time, as well as potentially within our budget or next couple of budget cycles. And then if need be, we could also talk about the broader list, but...
I think that's a good point, but my concern would be that our group, our committee at council, may have some different objectives in the balance of the council. And before we got to that point of picking and choosing, I felt that perhaps the council has a total lot to weigh in and give some thought to the whole thing, and then direct the process either back to the committee or back to the ad hoc council committee directing the overall group. But being involved at a process where we are all providing input and all receiving discussion, to me, would seem to have some value going on.
Yeah, absolutely.
From my standpoint, we had a lot of these task forces come out of the process, the enhancing San Carlos process, and if we thought, in a study session, maybe along the lines of tonight's format, where we have an hour, and we sort of receive the report, and listen to it, and have a chance to discuss it, that would be a nice punctuation to the community effort that's been put into it, so they, so council actually receives and listens to all those recommendations. Then the other thing we could do as a council is sort of be able to consider those points, and either start to refer them to staff, or another commission, or another committee, or if we felt like maybe we should now have an ad hoc committee and get a couple councilmembers to meet with the group and keep things moving along, that we could talk about what the next logical course of events might be. I'm sort of in favor of whatever gets those items to us as quickly as possible, and out to do something about things that, certainly some good important stuff that are going to come out of that, so.
You would favor holding it under 5A, the listing of special sessions?
Yeah, I think that would work.
Any other comment?
No, I'd like to make a motion that we do that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
So we will keep that under five, I'm sorry, Pat, you had a comment.
As long as you're going to have a study session first, though, we see you again then.
Thank you, I'm sorry I overlooked your card.
It looks like you...
You'll have to come up to the counter, you're deporting.
It was unclear to me when Mr. Weiss was talking about the calendar, when these task force study sessions were going to come up.
We plan to have everything finished by mid-February, and we have that number of meetings available, too.
And October is pretty much taken, so it won't be October.
That's probably true, yes.
I think we on the committee would like to have it come up fairly soon, so that out of that study session, we would hope to get two councilmembers as an ad hoc committee to continue to meet with the committee to move it forward. And if we, if it doesn't come to you until January, we're not going to have much done by February.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. That brings us to Item 9C, which is Consideration of a Strategic Work Plan Objective in Response to Conceptual Pedestrian Safety Plan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as sure you know, the pedestrian safety plan was prepared by Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and the five members really spent a lot of time between April and June to come up with the plan. However, the plan has, besides the ramps and some sidewalks, has very general ideas in the plan. For example, reduce the speed, and this is very general, how you do that. And VPAC members really don't have the history and the background of what city has done in the past, for example, for traffic coming. We have spent years and years with the Traffic and Transportation Commission, neighborhood meetings, and studying other cities, getting policies from other cities statewide, and we've gone through a lot of that over the years, I think approximately maybe 12 to 14 years, and established some policies that were recommended by Traffic and Transportation Commission and adopted by city council, based on all that data and that information. So members of VPAC, of course, are not aware of that, and so, and these general ideas that they have presented as pedestrian safety plan, we have to come up with some details that the city council can take some action and do something about it, not just saying, okay, reduce the speed by traffic coming, where and how, for example, remove utility poles from the sidewalks. They're all good ideas, but these are all, a lot of it, very costly, and I would definitely alternatives. So the item in front of you is that city council adopted objectives that the Public Works Director, by December 15, working with VPAC, and I think, I will emphasize, Traffic and Transportation Commission, to come up with a plan and give the city council, especially to members of city council, the background of what city has done in the past, what the policies are, and gives council some alternatives, perhaps they want to modify the alternatives, and come up with some cost estimate that city council can take and prioritize projects based on availability of funds. So this is still, it's a lot of work, believe me, but I hope, I'm sure, VPAC members and Traffic and Transportation Commission members will work with us to do this. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Parveez. Any questions, Parveez?
Just for clarification, so Parveez, is it your intention to, until it's determined whether or not we're going to put the two committees together, on this particular initiative to work, have joint meetings specifically geared around, whether they be special meetings, specifically geared around development of a conceptual pedestrian safety plan?
This is on VPAC agenda tomorrow night, and this is the first time that they're going to see it, so we're going to discuss it there, and then we'll go to Traffic and Transportation Commission in September as well, and we'll put it there, and then when we come back to city council, if the city council have merged these two commissions, of course, then the working makes it a lot more productive, and we have more members to work on the project. And so that's the process that we're going to follow, starting tomorrow night, and then to Traffic and Transportation Commission.
So if we, as a council, in the future, decide not to merge, they're not saying that that's going to happen, it seems to me that this would be an excellent opportunity to continue to hold joint meetings specifically related to this particular item, and not, one of the things I'm a little bit nervous about is that, you know, we're kind of silo or compartmentalizing these committees, and so rather than have them both meet together and just kind of hash it all out, we're saying, you meet here, and then you'll take it over there, and then you'll go back over here. And so I would just like to strongly encourage you to talk to both committees and see if there'd be interest in working together with the two committees, irrespective of what we do as a council for the committees. Because I think this does make a lot of sense, and it would give them a good opportunity to work together and to understand how interrelated the two committees really potentially are.
Sure, we can try that, sure. Anyone else?
I just, I wanted to thank you for bringing this back. I know we talked about the last meeting, and it seems responsive to, I know one of the things that certainly I was bringing up, and I think council had some concurrent thoughts on it, so thank you to you and Mr. Weiss for jumping right on this. I think the history's important, I think, also, I think some of the current developments that we see going around in local communities that we can now add to consideration, whether it's flashing sidewalks, or countdown pedestrian, you know, the seconds on the lights are great, and I know we're getting some of those in town as well, and some sort of, the plan with a schedule over the course of years, so we can demonstrate how we're making progress and how it's important to the city. So I think it's great that we move forward on, and I appreciate you guys coming right back with it.
Thank you. All right, we'll take a motion.
I would move that we adopt the strategic development of a strategic work plan objective for the conceptual pedestrian safety plan. Am I saying that right? This is quite an interesting agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion made by Councilmember Tiggledordi, and seconded by Mr. Lewis. Councilmember Lewis, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Mm-hmm.
That brings us to the 9D, under our revised agenda, Consideration of the Worrying Contract for Street Repair Resurfacing for 2006-7.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have a memo that was delivered to you this evening, that we are recommending that the proposals we receive today be rejected for the following reasons. Over the last six months or so, asphalt prices have been increasing substantially, and it has become very difficult to estimate the projects. And at the same time, during the summer, all paving contractors are busy with the state projects, and county projects, other projects. And we had estimated, and the staff was very aggressive to determine all these locations of the streets in need of repair, resurfacing, and we put the project together for approximately $700,000 or less for resurfacing and repair, and we thought if the bids come in around that, since we have only $980,000 in the budget, we can make a little bit of adjustment and do the project, maybe reduce part of it up to 20%, or around 25%. As you know, you just awarded a contract for Alameda, resurfacing at $305,000. We have another small project of patching for $31,000. Looking at the bids we received today, one at 800, the low bid at $836,000, $800,000 of that is resurfacing. Considering, again, it's in the summer, and we have only two proposals, and that's very disappointing, because there are at least six paving contractors locally within this area, that usually we get proposals from them, and their competition is high. But as you can see here, from 836 to 1,007,000, it is not really responsive. And we recommend that you reject these proposals, and it is estimated that for fiscal year 2007, 2008, there will be approximately $1 million available for this type of projects. And what we will, the staff will do, they will prepare the plans and specifications for next year's project, and combine it with this project, and with the city council approval, we call for bids around March or early April, that's when the paving contractors are not busy, and if the oil prices are going to be declining as they happened in the last few weeks, of course, there's no guarantee on that. We hope that we're going to have better competition, larger project, more contractors will bid they're not busy, and perhaps oil prices are down, asphalt prices will be a little lower, and we're going to get much better prices than with these prices that we receive today. And so that is the plan, and again, we recommend that you reject these two proposals.
Just one question, Parveez. The suggestion is that you'll be back early spring of 2007.
Yes.
And yet, we're dipping into 2007, 2008 fiscal year. Is that a problem, or is these funds anticipated and can be relied on?
They're anticipated, they can be relied on, but the way we would do the projects, by then, of course, we know much better how much really is going to be available, whether it's going $900,000 or a million. And the other part of it is, when we go out to bid in the spring, by the time we award contract, by the time contractor gets on the job and does the work, the first part of the project will be paid out of this fiscal year's budget, and the balance will be paid out of next fiscal year's budget.
Any other questions for Parveez?
No, I don't have any questions.
Councilmember Lewis?
So I have a couple of questions. One is, by rejecting this, we're delaying some of the work that we'll do.
Most of the work. We're going to do a project of approximately $50,000 to $60,000 of some areas that have to be done, but the rest of it, we're delaying the rest of it.
Right, so if we get started in early spring, how long effectively are we delaying that work?
Well, between the...
If we start right now versus starting in March?
If we start right now, the contractor will be on the job in October, and will be finished by January, so when we go March, project will be completed by August of next year.
About six months, roughly.
Approximately.
I did that math right. And then you're also saying that there may be more competition in the spring. Is there some external circumstances right now that we're aware of? Are they just busy? Is that why they're not bidding the jobs?
In the summer, paving, all paving jobs are, usually in the summer. And if people, you don't do paving in the winter, so when it comes towards the end of the winter, that's the beginning of basically the paving season, that's where all contractors are not, paving contractors are not that busy, and we anticipate having more competition.
So the timing, when we go out for bids, could increase the competition?
Oh, exactly, yes.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to reject the bids that we received on this street repair resurfacing project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Griselli moves, and Councilmember Lewis seconds. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiggledordi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Yes. All right, that brings us to the main event, more or less. The consideration of our... The consideration of our South Bayside Waste Management Authority request for proposals. And with staff, we have a, Brian's coming forward.
Vice Mayor Davids, what we would suggest is that the council follow your standard study session format, which is to initially ask for any public comment, anybody who from the public wants to comment on this issue, and once that's complete, I'll make some initial remarks, and I'll ask Bob Hilton from HFNH to come up and give you some brief comments, and then here's some input from the council. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Pat Bell has a request in, and that's the only one I have, so if anyone else would like to follow Pat, that'd be fine.
It may be too late for this. I probably should have gone to all those meetings before they got to this point, but I would like to see, for those of us who already are dedicated recyclers and don't fill up our 30-gallon garbage can ever, maybe in the spring and the fall, it would be nice to have a reduced rate and have the option of having, say, a 20-gallon can to reward those people who are doing it right. I read in the paper that they want to have wheeled carts. Some people say they would recycle if you give them a wheeled garbage can and a wheeled recycling cart, and some of us, you know, took our recycling to the recycling center before there was curbside, and, you know, we just, we compost, we don't fill up our garbage cans. So it'd be nice to, I know at the Natural Resources Public Meeting, Drew Shell said, you know, I can put my garbage can out once a month, once every six weeks. It's the recycling that piles up. So for those people who are doing it right and have been for a long time, it'd be nice to have that option, too. You know, now you can sign up for a 30-gallon can or a 50-gallon can, and you pay one price for one and one for the other, but there's no option for the people who really recycle and don't create a lot of garbage.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Brian?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a quick introduction of this topic. Council will probably recall that roughly a year ago, the SBWMA extended the term of the allied recycling and garbage franchise, but also at that time, they voted to do a request for proposal for both services. There have been two committees that have been working on that process, and later this year, you will see this item in a bit more detail. But what we thought we would do tonight is hold a study session for you to see some of the major themes that are under consideration, and also to get some comment and some input from you in terms of whether we're heading in the right direction, and also certain areas that you'd want to emphasize. And I would also note, sort of commenting on the last speaker's comments, there are a number of areas in here that do relate to the recycling area. We've provided in the staff report the impacts on the rates in some cases because there is a relatively large base of the service. Adding some of these enhancements have a relatively low cost, so I would encourage you to think about that as we go through them. And also, as you may know, the staff has also been advocating at the SBWMA level, serious consideration of the possibility of converting the vehicle fleet to clean fuel such as compressed natural gas to improve the environment. So we think that there are some interesting things that you can do. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the SBWMA consultant, Bob Hilton from HFNH, to highlight some major themes and to field your questions. And I'd also mention that Kevin McCarthy, our new executive director at the SBWMA, is in the audience as well, in case you wish to chat with him as well, and staff will also be available.
Good evening, council. Staff has said that this is going to set a precedent for your workshop, so be brief. The council asks questions, and I'll try to do that. I think the staff report's been very complete. There are a couple of issues that I thought I'd raise with you from meetings with other council members, so that it would be, these might be questions you might come up since they raised them themselves. First of all, in terms of the process, these different committees we've had of the board have met 14 times, including, not including the board meetings in between. Each of these meetings have been publicly noticed. The agendas and the agenda materials have all been on the website, rethinkwaste.com or org, so it's been available to the public. In terms of the process going forward, we're going to be back to you. We've been once before, we're here tonight, we're going to be back here five more times. And when you multiply that times the 12 agencies, there are 84 public presentations. I hope my family recognizes me when we're done with this. So this is a very public process, and it is appropriately so. As Brian pointed out, we're using this as a real opportunity, not only to improve customer convenience through wheeled carts. And in response to the question, yes, there will be 20-gallon service that you can subscribe to if you can divert that much material. And we think we can do customer convenience as well as improving our environmental values, achieving some of our goals 50% and beyond through such programs as single-stream recycling on a weekly basis, and the expansion of the materials that you'll be able to place in those containers. So both with regard to residential, multifamily, commercial, we're doing things to try and make things easier and also to improve the recycling rate. And as Brian pointed out, we are looking at alternative-fueled vehicles. In terms of the process, one of the things that we're really trying to emphasize through this process is a very transparent one. We want the discussions of this process to be in the public forum and have everybody get access to the same information. And so it's with that desire in mind that we have a code of conduct that deals with the board members, the elected officials on the member agencies, as well as the proposers. And it's just to make sure that everybody understands what the ground rules are and plays by those same ground rules. Finally, one of the areas that has come up, it has to do with the treatment of the employees that are currently providing service today. And I think it's clear that we all want to make sure that those valued people who understand our service area are out there, whoever the contractor is, whether it continues to be allied or somebody else. And we certainly don't expect to reduce our rates through a reduction in the compensation that those hard-working people earn. And so we are, want to make sure that there is a competitive wage that's provided to those people, and worker retention is of value to the new contractor. And we've asked them to describe to us how they will perform those functions as they move forward with implementing service. So we'll be able to evaluate that and make sure that we get the quality of worker and the continuity that we want for a high value of service. So with that, I'm available to respond to any questions you might have with regard to the approach that's being discussed by the board. I'll just point out that these recommendations from the committees were presented to the board in August. It's coming back to the board for a decision in October, and we'll be back to you after the board takes its actions. So tonight really is an opportunity to instruct your committee members, your board members, on how to vote.
Thank you, Bob. Who'd like to go first?
I guess I will go first. I just wanted to commend you on a really nice job on the RFP process. I did have a chance to obviously read through it, and it was quite thorough. My questions have to do with more on a broader scale. I'm noticing that the initial contract term is anticipated to be for seven years with the extension of up to 20 years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And yet, this is a five-and-a-half-year process to even get to this. So is this, my question really is, is the seven years realistic, or is there a reason why it's seven years and not 10 years, for example?
We want to make sure that we get a good quality of service, and we think keeping the horizon relatively short keeps that view on the contractor's mind. Our intent is to have some standards that if they achieve those standards, then it will go out to 10 years, and then we can negotiate beyond that if the quality of service we're getting is what we expect.
And then the, so the RFP is really more to select the provider of services and not necessarily to set the rates, because the rates would continually, they would be continued to be set the way that they currently are, which is they look at the cost of providing that service, and then they come back to the member agencies and they sort of negotiate the budget from there.
I'm sorry. Essentially, that's correct. We have tried to simplify that process a little bit, so now we do a very detailed analysis each and every year. What we're going to try to do is look at not every cost item and not do as thorough an audit each year in terms of the cost, but do it every three years, and use certain indices to be able to adjust those costs in the interim years.
Okay, and then the other questions I had actually had to do with these new three contractor-provided wheeled carts. And the first thing that jumped into my mind was, well, what a great idea. The second thought was, what are you going to do with everyone's old garbage cans? So my question to you would be more, is, do we have the ability to look at a phase-in process with these carts, or is there a way that we could sort of decouple that from, you know, starting January 1st, 2010, everyone gets these shiny, brand-new carts lined up on their driveways?
Well, I guess one point is, it's now the middle of 2006, and I'd hate to be a garbage can salesman between now and the end of 2010. So I think the public will be aware that, you know, they will be having those new carts on the horizon. Often what is done is those people want to keep their cans for storage of items. I'll give you an example. I used to be in a situation where I had cans that would be taken out to the curb. I cleaned those up, and I use them to store my kids' basketballs and all those things that roll around in the garage. So they work very effectively that way. But it is possible to collect some of those. The recycling containers, for example, can be kept by people and used for storage, and unfortunately frequently are now.
Yeah. My next question actually is on the same. Would our residents be precluded from using non, sort of, non-customer-provided containers or provided containers? So for example, if they have extra yard waste, would they be charged extra, or would they, does the RFP allow for the ability to put a second, for example, can out there, or is it so reliant on this automation or semi-automation that we would really discourage the consumers from doing that?
It is reliant on the equipment to work together, the collection vehicle and the cart to work together. We are going to have more than one container if people need it for their yard waste so that they'll have ample storage area. So you will largely be in a situation like you were describing. We want to, we do not want to encourage that.
But with moving from a every-other-week-to-every-week pickup, it's intended that that should be alleviated, at least you're not storing it or trying to store it for two weeks.
Right.
And then the only, I had two other questions here. I noticed under the Shoreway, the facility considerations, since the facility tends to be in San Carlos, for some reason, we tend to end up with a lot of debris, like in the Holly, over change, overpass, and around the facility itself as people are driving from other areas to the facility to either use the transfer station or to transfer some of their materials. Is there any provision in there for, as part of the performance standards, that at least some of that trash is being picked up or maintained, especially here in San Carlos?
Well, I would, first of all, say that you probably have a conditional use permit on that property that requires it to be cleaned. I know when I'm over there, and I am a fair amount, you know, the area generally is picked up, but that doesn't mean on a weekend or at different times of day that there is litter that may accumulate, but I'm sure that they have an obligation to clean that.
They do under the use permit. Bob's correct.
Okay, so it's just an enforcement issue on our side?
Correct.
Okay. All right, and then my last question, I did, I noticed that under, I guess, the labor considerations, the language is competitive wages and benefits, and of course, I'm sure my fellow council members along with me have been contacted by our local labor unions, and they're interested in a provision looking for prevailing wage. So when you talk about competitive wages and benefits, you're not talking about prevailing wage. Is that correct, or?
Well, I want to be careful about this, and it's one of the reasons why we're careful about the use of the word prevailing wage. Prevailing wage has a very specific meaning.
Absolutely.
And it generally means that the state of California will come in and determine what the prevailing wage is. Even the Teamsters Union understands that that's not likely to happen here on a regular basis, and so what they have suggested is that the SBWMA board determine what the prevailing wage is in accordance with some procedures. What we're doing with the proposers is a little bit different in an approach, but the same objective in mind. We're asking the proposers to demonstrate that the compensation and benefits that they're proposing are consistent with wages and benefits that are being paid in the Bay Area. And so we're trying to stay away from negotiating on behalf of the new contractor with the union, but rather to make sure that our policy objectives are clear, that the workers are being treated well, and that we have those qualified people to work for. So we have had many discussions with the Teamsters. I'm sure that we'll get to talk with them a little bit more as we move forward in drafting the specific language.
Okay, and then I have one last question, and that has to do actually with more of the evaluation criteria. So when the responses to these RFPs come back, will there, are all the member agencies going to be participating, or at least reviewing the evaluation criteria and the weighting for each one of the evaluation criteria in order to analyze these RFPs? Or it's simply going to be an independent committee that's going to be looking at all of these and then sort of determining which ones are best based on the responses?
That's a great question. What we're going to be doing is coming back to you with the actual request for proposal and the contract itself. You'll have a chance to look at that and comment on it and give its direction before it's finally issued. As part of the RFP will be, what is the evaluation criteria? What's important to us? And so you'll have an opportunity to comment on that. Right now, it's intended that the selection committee be made up probably of city managers from the cities to evaluate the proposals and make a recommendation to the board, the SBWMA board, which that recommendation then will come back to you as the holder of the franchise. So ultimately, you will be making a decision about who to select for this collection contract.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Through the chair, one thing I was going to mention as well is the SBWMA board is also thinking about having an option of having a separate part of the RFP for both collection and recycling. Again, throughout, what we've been trying to do is stimulate competition so that we can get more people to participate in this procurement process. So it may not, it may be the case we actually come back to you with a recommendation for each type of service rather than just one company.
Just to be clear, the collection operation would be one company. One company would do the collection of solid waste, recyclables, and yard waste. The operation of the transfer station, the recycler would be a separate contract that ultimately is approved by the board, the SBWMA board. That could be the same company, it could be two different companies.
Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. The first question I have has to do with the variable index adjustments that were mentioned in the report. And my question is, just because, I guess, what I want to try to understand is, what percentage is, what's our exposure on a year-to-year basis based on those fluctuating items? And those being, just for members of the public, the per-gallon fuel costs, workers' compensation, premium rates, and insurance premiums. So the question for me to try and understand it is, what percentage of the current costs do those variable items comprise a current rate?
Yeah, just to be clear, what the intent here is, is to hold the companies accountable to certain things for which they can be held accountable. So their productivity is something they're going to have to live with. If they think they can do 800 homes per day with a car, a route, then they will be, have the equipment to do that and people. If it takes more than that to do it, they're going to have to put more into it, and we will not compensate them for that. There are certain costs that really the economy does, on a CPI, a consumer price index, doesn't respond to quickly enough. So you see fluctuations in things like fuel and workers' comp and those kinds of things. Obviously, workers' comp has come back under control now, and you've seen reductions in that. Recently, the cost of fuel, as somebody else mentioned, I think Parvise mentioned earlier, has come down. We'll see where it is two weeks from now, but... We'll see where it is two weeks from now, but, but for the last two weeks, it's been coming down, I'm told. So what we're trying to do is create a situation where companies don't feel that they are taking an unusual amount of risk with regard to some volatile items. Having said that, those are not major cost elements in their provision of service. So I don't think we're tremendously at risk on that, and we'll have it going up as well as going down. So it'll work both ways.
And so just roughly speaking, is it less than 20% of the cost? I'm just trying to get a handle on what the variable...
Yes, yes, less than 20% in your, your spread in any time will be much smaller. So it's not going to have a big impact. But I think as much as anything, frankly, it's, it's a sense of fairness to the companies. These are issues that they've raised, and because there isn't a big cost impact, I think it's a reasonable risk that we can take without having big impacts on our rates.
Sure. And does that work both ways?
Yes, it goes up and down.
Great. My other question is, there's, there's a, by the way, there's a lot of great stuff in this report, and, and, you know, I really am, I'm so glad to see that we're trying to move in, in all of these directions, because I think they're incredibly important.
Thank you.
But it sort of brings me to my next question is, it's a little bit different than Councilmember Teagle Doorty's, and that is, do we have to wait that long? I realize we have a current contract and all that, but it seems like we're, we're behind other communities that, that I'm aware of, and so like single steam, single stream recycling processing and all that. And perhaps it's a naive question, but from my vantage point, I hate to wait. But I realize contracts are contracts, and it comes up for review when it comes up for review. So is there, is there any headway we can make in the meantime?
Well, we are working with the existing contractor now to make some improvements in services in certain areas. For example, we're trying to improve our diversion levels, and we're coming back to the table to talk to them about doing that over the next period through the end of 2010. So we're certainly not stopping our efforts just waiting until this new contract comes. But in terms of implementing a lot of new programs with additional capital costs, there just isn't time to amortize those in the short term. The other problem, and until you really study the schedule, it seems like, my gosh, January of 2011 is a long ways off. I'll bring you back to the 84 meetings I've got to go to. We have, this is with the 12 agencies, it, it takes time to go through these issues. I think our effort with the PAF and PAT committees of the board to look at the programs and facilities and the process have been very effective, and we've got a lot of staff reports that support the recommendations that have been made, and it just takes some time. We'll be moving into drafting after we get through this round with the cities and we, we find that there's a consensus for these programs, we're going to get started in drafting the agreement. When you take these recommendations and reduce them down to actual words, and then you start getting people reviewing them, it just takes time to do. So I think, I think we have an appropriate amount of time to get it done. We're continuing to work to improve things now, and I think when January comes along, and we have 2011, and we've had some time to plan the implementation, we'll be glad we took the time that we've had.
Yeah, I would definitely say I'm just sort of green-broke here in trying to get used to the magnitude with which things, how long things take with all these, the different public agencies. It's, it's been an eye-opener, not always a positive one, and that's not a criticism of any one process. It's just, for me, it's really difficult to come to terms with the amount of time it takes to, to make progress on things in general with public agencies and, and some of the government things. So, excuse me for that, but that's, so another question for you. In the proposal for new services, when we talk about, and this is kind of a follow-up to Councilmember Teagle Doorty's point, in some communities, I know that you can order, so let's say you have one garbage can, and it has the automated where the, the truck can come and pick it up and it can take it away, but you only have one garbage can, that you can order additional pickups between days of your pickup days. Would that, is that something that would be within this?
It's very uncommon for me to see in residential service, and we, we've worked throughout the state and a lot of the western United States, more than one day, one day a week collection. That's very extraordinary. It's very expensive to get a truck to come by your house, and so we'd rather see you, instead of subscribing to a 32-gallon can and have it collected once a week, to have you subscribe to a 64-gallon cart and have it collected once a week.
So will, will it be part of this provision or not? Do you know?
No, it will not. We have not done that.
It's just, my parents in Fresno have it, and it was great. You know, mom filled up the can early. We gave a call, two days later, a truck was out there and picked it up. It was really neat.
Well, hopefully with the weekly collection, it eliminates some of the confusion, and, and we won't have missed pickups and, or people not setting out their carts. Right now, you kind of have to figure out which day it is or go out and see what your neighbors are doing and hope they're right.
Yeah, I always thought, what if one neighbor just started it on the wrong week? Everybody put their stuff out and did that?
April Fools, it happens.
I have one other question for now, and that is, this comes under the code of conduct. One of the things it says is, non-public meetings or conversations with potential proposers. Would a list of potential proposers come to all the currently elected city officials so we actually know who those organizations are and perhaps who those main representatives are so we don't unwittingly have a conversation with somebody about them?
Yes, we're going, as I said earlier, we will have the proposers also signing this on, so people who are going to be proposing will be known to us.
Great. Thank you.
Actually, may I ask a following question? Is that for just those board members that are on the contractor selection committee? That's not, for example, all of us sitting on here?
Yes, it is.
So it means that I cannot pick up the phone and call anyone at Allied, for example, from October 1st of 2006 to June 30th, 2009?
Well, I think, you know, this is an area where we're going to be working on the language a little bit. It's been pointed out that the language is fairly restrictive or unclear. I think some people have had the impression that, for example, if current employee of Allied or somebody who works for NorCal that lives in, on the peninsula, say in San Carlos, who's a member of a city commission, the question has been, well, can I talk to that person or not? Well, of course, the intent is that you can. The objective of this, and we just need to make sure that the language is clear about it, the objective is, discussions about this proposal process are something we want to have take place in the public arena. We want to try to prevent a situation from occurring where individual companies are coming to individual council members and representing things about themselves or others that nobody has an opportunity to challenge if it's untrue. So we want to make sure that it's, it's kept in the open. Everybody is making decisions based on the same information.
So if indeed, for example, under Councilmember Lewis's scenario where things get speeded up a little bit, it's really intended that during the time that the proposals have been received and are being reviewed and considered, that's the time that's really critical? Or is it actually the time leaving?
We're trying to look at the time from when the RFP is distributed, and they're working on it, and then the selection process goes through. It's sort of that timeframe that's most important. And obviously, if, heaven forbid, your, your can is not collected on its appropriate day, we want you to be able to call the company and get that taken care of.
Call my city manager. I'm just teasing. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Councilmember Griselli.
Vice Chair.
Just a couple of questions. I want to also sort of piggyback to what Councilwoman Teagle Doorty said about the, the wages and benefits. And it's semantics here, but semantics can sometimes be interpreted in certain ways versus prevailing and competitive, and you've spoken to that. And I would be in, in favor of some sort of a, whether, however, or whoever decides that the definition, it'd be prevailing. The second thing would be for employer retention. You have it under, in the executive summary here, under Section 3A, that provide employer preferences, preferences to the current contractor's employees. And I'm concerned, I mean, the fellows that, that work in my neighborhood at least, they know who we are, they know what we have out there. The word preference, and, and again, I don't want to, I appreciate your situation where you don't want to negotiate a contract before you even have a provider. But I, I think that there should be something in there for employer retention that's a little stronger than preference. That's just my, my opinion.
My experience has been that the companies are dependent upon these same people to provide service, and so they're very valued to them, and they understand the importance of that. So I, I think as, as they are out recruiting, the typical thing is, they want to check to make sure that they have the appropriate license for operating the vehicle.
Sure.
They want to check their driving record, and they typically want to do a drug test. Other than that, my experience is, they will accept the people that are there up to the number of people that they need to provide the service.
Are we anticipating that there would be less people hired under whichever company under these newer rules, these automated mechanization cans? Would people, would you anticipate that there'd be a percentage of people to be losing their jobs?
I don't think we'll see a large percentage, because we're going to weekly service, for example. So we're getting service twice as often for yard waste and recyclables. The curbside automated service will move us from two people to one-person trucks, but we will have a few more of those people out there on those trucks. So we don't see big changes in the number of people.
Again, big is a definitive term, that your big and my big might be different. But anyway, I made my point, and, you know, it's, that's the whole, I think the reason you're here is just to get our input. The other question is, do you have any feel for how many companies would, would apply for this at this point? I know in, in San Jose, they just had a, a situation where they had some companies, two or three, I believe, or possibly four, I'm not sure how many, and they chose a company that I think was a smaller operation. And I'm concerned that, that, you know, mom and pop comes in and says, well, we can do this. And we don't have the, of course, they don't say, they don't have the trucks, they don't have the people, they don't have the expertise, we can do this. When this request for proposal, and again, I've read this, but I, sometimes you skim and you don't read all the details, are there ways to make sure that, you know, mom and pop, and again, nothing against a small operator trying to make a living, comes in and lowballs the, the bid and, but really can't provide the service? I'm very concerned about that.
Yeah. Well, that's why you have people like me, because we go through and look at the proposals to make sure that not only do, are they approaching the service appropriately, in other words, the right number of trucks, right number of people, an appropriate amount of productivity, but they have a history and a record for having provided this service, and they have the financial capability of providing the service. So we're looking to that. At the same time, you know, every company doesn't have to be a large publicly traded company.
I agree with that.
To provide good service. And we have even in San Mateo County, some, some very good companies providing service to three or four cities within the county. So we're also looking at those companies to provide a service. But we are trying to create a very, getting to the first part of your question, a very competitive environment so that we do get as many proposals from well-qualified firms as we can.
Do you have any, I mean, again, I don't mean to tie you down, are you anticipating 20? Or you're anticipating 10?
No, probably more in the round six, something like that, for a variety of reasons. But I think if we can get six proposals, we'll be in very good shape.
Great, thank you very much.
May I ask a following question? To Bob's or Councilmember Griselli's question regarding labor considerations, you know, we, we have the ability to strongly encourage negotiations to retain existing or to hire existing people, but they're going to be, if I'm understanding this correctly, they'll be going and negotiating their own wages with those unions for the people that would be picking up. Is that correct? So for example, if, if a driver right now, and I'm picking a number out of a hat, is being paid $20 an hour to do a certain job, the new, a new firm could come in and say, you know what, guess what, our firm only pays $15 for that equivalent job. That's not really a realistic scenario, is it?
I don't think so, and I think a company that proposed that, as we looked at, at their proposal, we'd ask them, how are you going to employ these people? And how are you going to make them happy enough that they're going to want to stay with you? And therefore, how are we going to be sure we're going to get a quality of service over a period of time? So it really is incumbent upon them to demonstrate to us that what they're proposing is reasonable. And I don't think we'll have a problem with that. But I think we need to, my only concern is that we not end up dictating to them what those wages and benefits are, because if we do, and then they get into negotiations with the union, there isn't much room to move, is there, on other issues?
No, absolutely. I guess, I just didn't have any sense of the level of detail that this RFP would be generating in terms of the responses. But it sounds like from what you're describing, your expectation and having, I'm sure, I'm sure done this many times before, is, is that the level of detail that will be responded with will give not only you, but the evaluation subcommittee, whoever is evaluating this, the ability to actually see not only what their, their pricing proposal is and their operational proposal, but actually be able to dig into the, is this realistic?
Yes.
From your experience?
Yeah, we, we have a lot of forms that they get to fill out, and most of them are very familiar with them, having done it before. We've handled about 100 procurements in the state of California. We typically get two three-inch, three-ring binders full of documents from them, and then discs with the electronic spreadsheets on them. And we go into a great deal of detail to evaluate those proposals.
That's why it takes five and a half years.
Good. Vice Mayor Davis could also follow up on that? So when you, when you said there'd be six companies you estimate would submit bids, that's if we have the less restrictive language. In the executive summary, it says, if, if, by recommending the less restrictive language, that there'd be more contractors submitting proposals. So is that six?
The less restrictive about what? About the labor issue, or?
It's, yeah, it's about the labor issue.
Yeah. I, what, the, the situation in San Jose, there were a number of factors that I saw quotes on, that people brought up. One was it was a very short-term contract, and so it was difficult to amortize the cost of your capital investment over that period and come up with a competitive rate. There were also some concerns about the labor language. Now, I, I don't know, had it not been for the short term, they might have gotten more proposals. It may not have been the labor language. But it's like a lot of things, you know, it's sort of a scale. The more you start weighing things down, there's a lot, putting that two binders together is a big expense, because they have to really get familiar with our area. And so companies start looking at it and say, can I really, do I have a chance to win? Do I really have a chance to put something together here that'll be successful? And if I get the contract, am I fairly confident that I can make the profit that I think I'm going to? And as you start to put a lot of factors on that that make those answers difficult to say yes to, you get fewer proposals.
Sure, I, I understand. I guess I'm just wondering how it would affect what you're, what you're currently saying, because I, I know from my standpoint that if we have, if the current workers that we have are, are good workers, that they ought to be able to, you know, keep their jobs. And people that work in this kind of service ought to be able to live in the community, which gets to the prevailing wage question. So, so for me, in reading through this, one, one of the points is, if we have a less restrictive language, we'll get more proposals. So I'm just wondering, what do you think it would go from six to like three or four? And I don't, again, I'm not trying to tie you down. I'm just wondering if, if we can, because, you know, that certainly is a value of mine. Is it very restrictive to, to have slightly more preferential language for current employees and current employees?
Councilman Lewis, I know you wouldn't hold me to account for a number that I gave you, but in 30 years of working with local government, I have been held to account for numbers like that that I can't give.
Right.
So I can't answer that question for you.
Okay.
Bob, I have a couple of questions, perhaps on a more practical nature. What's wrong with every-other-week on recycles? It seems to work, it works in our neighborhood. Why are we going to single every, every week, especially considering what would seem to be an additional cost?
It's a good question, and we spent some time looking through this in terms of the background data. I will tell you that the trend is to go to weekly service. There are very few communities that have bi-weekly service. It appears that by going to weekly service, you increase the amount of participation in your yard waste and recycling programs because it's more convenient for people to do. We have never seen anybody go to weekly service and then opt to go back to bi-weekly service. So I don't think there's much of a likelihood, if you do this, that you're going to reverse yourself later on. So we think that the, the factors that we've seen out there will lead us to a better level of participation for recycling.
I also believe, I think I'm correct, that we have the ability twice a year to call for a special pickup. At least, we used to have that.
You do.
We do. And I don't see that in your analysis. Is that going to be a part of the service?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Then I've been led to believe over the years that we have... Then I've been led to believe over the years that we have a very high-value recycle product because we have a dual stream. And now we're proposing a single stream, which, you know, makes a lot of sense as you see it being used throughout other communities. But what happened to the high-value recycles that we've been producing all these years? And why are we now changing our mind on that?
It's an excellent question. First of all, we anticipate that we'll get somewhere between 20% to 30% more recyclable material by going to single stream. Part of that's the convenience, part of it's we're expanding some of the materials. Probably if you asked me five to 10 years ago about single stream, I'd have to report to you that there's been, there are a lot of problems with it, that you have a high residual rate where you can't get material out and that the value of the material is relatively low. New processing technologies have improved that a great deal. And the markets have sustained single stream tremendously. We are able to sell overseas most of everything that's generated here. So we've been very successful with that. So when you look at the new technologies, there's no reason to believe that we're going to find a difficult time getting prices for that material or being able to recycle it.
Okay. And then a final question is in terms of the, the routing of the service. At one time, I believe, everyone in San Carlos got picked up on, let's say, Monday. And now we're picked up maybe Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday. And, and one of the complaints I've had from the public is that there's always garbage laying around because there's always some other route that's in process. Perhaps not a big problem, but what will be the, the situation in terms of a new provider? Will they have a choice as to whether they schedule different routes throughout the week or do it all on one day or anything?
Yeah, we've not, we've not made any recommendations with regard to specific cities and specific days of collection. That typically is one of the things we're looking for from the companies to propose. So when we get that back, we'll look at that and evaluate it and see whether it makes sense or not.
Okay. And the final question I have is, is what's next? You're doing this with us, I presume you're doing it with all the other cities?
Tomorrow night's Belmont, next week is Foster City. And we didn't even anticipate this step along the way. When that's done, we come back to the board in October. The board will evaluate all of this and make recommendations, which will then come back to all the 12 agencies again. And you'll have an opportunity to say, "Yeah, we're happy with that," or "No, we're not," or "You need to fine-tune this or that." We recognize that these are 12 different communities. And we're going to have to make some accommodation for that. And we'll try and accommodate as much as we possibly can. But I, so far, it's been interesting. I think there's been a consistency in terms of the programs and things like that. So I don't think we'll have a, a huge problem of integrating it. So what, what's next is we'll come back to you, you'll give us a final nod or a nod or tell us what to do or where to go. And we'll try to off and start trying to put together these documents to solicit the proposals with.
Very good. Any other questions for Bob?
No, I just actually had one question, because I remember the last time this came around, not this specific, but the negotiation of rates. One of the big things that was discussed was curbside versus behind-the-fence pickup. And there's, San Carlos is a little bit unique from our neighboring communities in that we have hilly areas where it's really nice to have the behind-the-fence kind of pickup versus the, the flatter areas where, I mean, all my neighbors, which is amazing to me, all assume that they have to drag their cans out to the curb, not realizing that we all pay for behind-the-fence pickup. Yeah, exactly. I shouldn't say that. But do, will the communities have the ability to actually designate areas where we'd like to say, you know, "In this area is going to be curbside and in this area is going to be, because of the, the nature of the terrain or the, the hills, that we'd like to have two drivers because we know, you know, we've got more of a senior population and maybe they're having a hard time dragging their cans up and down the hill," type of thing?
Let me respond to that. First of all, we're looking for the companies to identify for us the hard-to-serve areas in the communities. You know, when you get east of El Camino, you're pretty flat. And when you get west of El Camino, you're getting hillier. And if you move further, it's much more so. So typically, what we find is the companies, and this is what takes time, is the companies drive throughout all of the service areas. They know the equipment and the approach they're taking to service. And so they will designate which routes would be hard to serve. Now, just because they're hard to serve doesn't necessarily mean that the material can't be brought to the curb. But there are some situations where on very steep areas, it's hard to find a level place to place that container. And they'll have to tell us how they intend to deal with that and we'll evaluate that. There isn't a huge amount of that. We just dealt with that in the West Valley Cities and Santa Clara County, Montasurino and Saratoga, Los Caddes and Campbell. And they have a lot of the same kind of train you do. We didn't have a lot of hard, hard areas where it couldn't be brought to the curb. But what you do end up with is some overhangs of trees, some narrower streets, and you have to have a smaller truck to get in and deal with that. You mentioned something about elderly people. And if people have a disability and physically just aren't able to take material to the curb, then we'll have an exemption for them for the American with Disabilities Act. And, and we have to do that. And the companies understand that and will work with those people to, to deal with that issue. So those people will be in that position. And then finally, what we've said is, if there are people that just insist on having backyard service without a disability, that's a possibility that we could accommodate. But we need to charge a large enough fee to make it not attractive, because we need to make sure they're covering their costs, because we lose efficiency and everybody loses in that. They need to cover their costs that they're causing as a result of it.
Yeah, I mean, actually, that's why I was, I was interested, because I, I saw in the executive summary, it's, there's backyard service as an option. And I just, again, know now we supposedly are paying for backyard service and in most cases, you know, they may come behind my fence to get the can, but it never goes back behind the fence.
Well, if, if, it is true in a sense that we're paying for backyard service, but it's been estimated that close to 70% of the cans in the service area are placed at the curb. If they weren't, our costs would be higher. So in one sense, people who are getting backyard service and not paying for it are getting it at the benefit of those who are taking it out to the curb right now.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Anything else for Bob? Bob, you've done a wonderful job. You set a high standard for future study sessions. And carry on.
Thank you.
Move now to 11A, new business. That's an update on the Big Horn Desert View Water Agency. Challenge, I guess we'll call it, without reading the whole thing.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Council, the council received a report from us. It appears that the courts have continued to interpret Prop 218, not in the way that most cities and city attorneys throughout the state have interpreted it or other courts up to now. They chose to do so immediately after we had adopted our ordinance setting sewer rates and a resolution to put them on the tax roll. We're in the same boat as several other cities. I pointed one in particular, which was Millbrae with water rates. And what they're doing is a ratification of their rates using the Prop 218 process. It's a protest hearing. We'll mail notice out to everybody with an explanation of what it, what it's all about. Would have preferred to put it on as soon as possible, but in discussions with staff, it appears that the, a target of December 11th for a protest hearing would be the easiest to handle. It's not all that easy to get all the records together for the mailings that have to take place. And we'd have to mail out notices sometime in mid, mid-October. Latest date would be, I think, October 25th or thereabouts. We're aiming to go a little earlier than that, give a little more notice. We wouldn't anticipate to get a majority protest, but that's the process that has to be followed under Prop 218. And we're still looking at the, speaking of solid waste and recycling, we're still looking at, that is an issue. We haven't had to deal with it, I believe, for about two or three years, once we set rates two or three years ago. But there's an issue as to whether or not, just like water and just like sewer, solid waste hauling rates have to be set by the same kind of a protest hearing method.
So just to continue you out a minute, Bob. What precisely will come under this case? Water, sewer?
Right now, it's water, sewer and trash.
And trash. And so any increase, a dollar a month, whatever it might be,
Right.
would have to go to the public for approval?
Another one, a similar one is the NPDES fee that we have. When it was increased last, the county did it for everybody and did it with a protest Prop 218 actually calls for an election, in, in some cases for increased taxes. And it, it creates an exception for water, sewer and trash. You don't have to go to an election, but you have to have a protest hearing. So it's not as if you have to get a majority in favor, it's just a majority protest.
I know it's early in the game in terms of how the cities handle this, but it's almost as though you'd like to go out once and try to cover everything for a period of time and try to make it a level that is going to work for several years. So then you're not constantly going back to the public with yet another flyer requesting their, their, basically requesting their approval. So is that, I mean, do you see any, any trends developing here during this short term?
I think we'll look at it, because I don't think any of us want to go out and have protest hearings year after year after year. It might be difficult with sewer. Our experience has been an annual review and an annual adjustment in those fees. A city like Millbrae had a tough time because their water rates were really set by San Francisco.
Mm-hmm.
So they, they were blindsided when their rates went way up and they were sitting there and had to adjust in response to that. So are there any questions?
Any questions for Bob?
This is a process camp intended to follow and, and we'd like your input on this process and the timing on it as well.
Ask a follow-on question. I know that I've seen notices like in my PG&E bill, for example, of, you know, upcoming rate increases. And it's essentially the same thing, but they're contained within the bills that are being mailed. Is this something that we can actually look at, sort of putting the noticing back on the providers and having them enclose the really small, fine print, like they do with the rest of the things?
It could be done for trash. Those are the only ones I believe that are billed out separately. Sewer goes on the tax rate roll.
Okay. And the same with water could be done, right? That way, potentially?
I think we set water. That's Cal water.
Yeah, we don't set the water.
Luckily, we don't have to deal with that.
And then the, I assume, for example, cable or some of these other types of public utilities, those are exempt as well?
We, we don't set those either.
You know, it's supposed to be a property-related fee. And I think the court really is stretching to say that, for example, the sewer rates, which only go to those folks, those properties that we're providing sewer service to, is a property-related fee, is, it's just a stretch, you know? NPDES, where we charge every parcel because of drainage, that's more logical.
Okay. All right.
Councilmember Griselli?
The only thing I'm concerned about is the timing of the, I don't have a problem with the issue. But I'm, I'm concerned if you mail these out in mid-October, that it's going to conflict with the fire assessment. So I, I
We thought about that. We feel that by that time, you're, the fire assessment will be already out. That's set for what, mid, mid-November? For, for the
Well, the mailing's going to go out September 29th. So what it says here is, the mailing would be mid-October, so it's only two weeks after.
We can mail it out as late as October 25th.
Well, again, I, I would, I would probably prefer the October 25th as opposed to the mid.
We can do that.
Because I think, I think, I, I would assume there's going to be some confusion. If you get two of these, you're going to go, "What, what's going on?"
Why, why can't you push it out, Bob?
We could do it after the first of the year. It's just a question of the longer period of time for ratification. Claims could be made, claims could be made and that the first six months were not done in accordance with Prop 218 and, you know, refunds could be requested. I think the city manager had a concern that he wanted to, he would actually have preferred that we have the notices go out and the hearing held prior to the tax bills being sent out, which would go out the middle of October and are paid by, at least the first half is paid by mid-December. So if we put it out there till after the first of the year, there's that issue. But it certainly would avoid any confusion if we wait. So we could send the notices out end of November and have a protest hearing at the first meeting in January, something like that, with the council. That's, we wanted to get your feedback on it. We didn't want to make that decision.
So we have an awkward timing situation because of the, because of the law, the, the court case, as well as what we've already done. So we have processed our new amounts to the tax collector. They will be on the bill.
It will be.
When the bill comes, they will be there.
Right.
And there's no change in that.
Can't do that now.
My, I understand that it conflicts, but I would, I would imagine, I mean, just in looking at sort of Millbrae's notification, it's not asking the voters to do anything, it's just telling them it's a notice of increase. And we may or may not choose to make it as large as Millbrae did or as prominent, as long as we notice them. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I think that from a mailing standpoint, we could probably look to ask staff or direct staff to do it in such a way that it's not seen as conflicting or competing with the assessment, the fire assessment. But I think we, you know, essentially, what we've done is, I mean, what I've just heard from Bob is, is that basically, we've told everybody that we're not in compliance and that potentially they could file a claim. So you know they probably all are going to, or, you know, a lot of people may be tempted to do that. So I would, I would suggest that we do this before, do this per staff recommendation, which is at the December 11th hearing. Send them out the latest date possible, which is end of October. Maybe have staff work with Bob, you, just to make sure that, you know, it's not something like the mailing, design of the mailing would be competing or sending a conflicting message with the fire assessment information as well.
When does the fire assessment due?
The mailing will be September 29th and the meeting in November 14th or 15th, I think.
That's correct. Both meetings in November will have, the balance will be to the first meeting in November.
Right. And then we'll, we'll have them countered by the second meeting.
Correct.
And I'd just add to what, to what Bob has indicated. I mean, staff struggled with this too, because we know that there could be an apparent confusion with some folks getting two issues out there at the same time. The Public Works Department has put on hold the capital program that has been planned for the waste router treatment system pending the resolution of this. And so that program will be put on hold until, you know, if we defer this until after the first of the year, then we would defer the capital improvements for an additional three or four months as well. But probably the bigger overriding factor was the thought that the, the tax bills are going to be out and, and people are going to be expecting to pay those taxes by December. And we just thought it was appropriate that they be given an opportunity to, to protest this particular fee before those, or as close to the date that those taxes were due as possible. And so we brought it forward with that recommendation. But we would certainly understand the council's desire to move that date if you so chose.
Bob, I would, you know, be interested in hearing the other members of the council, what they had to, and I appreciate Councilwoman Inge, Inge Sigurdsson, Dority's comments. And I was just wondering about the other folks.
I would concur with Councilmember Grisilli. I, I just think that the
I just think that the fire assessment is so, so critical that I wouldn't want to do anything that could compound the, could compound the situation for their, for people to be, you know, inclined not to want, to accept that assessment. So I would, I would sort of defer to Councilmember Grisilli's force, the timing of it goes, but in my estimation, we can't, it's just much too critical to do those two things. And it sounds like if we can put some capital, if we're putting that capital improvement on hold, that, in my estimation, there's greater liability in not, in negatively affecting the fire assessment than there might be in delaying this by, what, what did you say, Councilmember Grisilli, by a couple of weeks?
Well, it's early. Thirty day, I mean, from December 11th to maybe, what about that first meeting in January? It's only another 30 days, and I'd hate to be accused of putting a monkey wrench, I mean, if something went wrong with the fire assessment, you'd hate to have this, be there to blame, whether it was to blame or not. We can send the notices out for the protest hearing prior to, I mean, we could send those notices out, let's say, November 20 or something like that, so that people have plenty of notice, even during the time of the tax bill being due.
Like I said, if it was my preference, I mean, since the, the fire thing is going to be back to 14th or 15th, it would, 13th, whatever day that is in November, the Ides of November, that it would go out, you know, the day after. I mean, if we meet on a Monday, then they go out on a Tuesday, and then there was no conflict, there's never, there's not two of them out there. In that case, then it would be, the end of, it would be like about January 1st, or the first meeting in January then would be, would be the protest meeting.
Right.
That, I mean, if you, that would be, to me, the perfect situation, because there couldn't be, there might be a little confusion, but it's already gone, it's already done.
If that's council consensus, we can proceed on that basis.
Well, let's hear from Mr. Randle, I think he has something to sell us.
Brian Randle, San Carlos. You know what I'm going to say. Don't get in the way of the fire board, whatever you do, the fire assessment. Don't interfere with that, please. We put so much effort into that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think my sense is to, is to delay a mailing until we're through with the fire issue. I know there's a risk, but it seems to me that it's a risk we ought to take in order to keep the ground clear and not, not compete with, with a very important matter before us in terms of the fire assessment.
Do we need a motion on this, or?
No, I think there, well, there's consensus, right?
Yeah, there's consensus. We see, we here and see consensus, and we'll proceed on that basis.
Okay, consensus is given to staff, and we'll move forward with item 11B, consideration of joint city council commission meetings in preparation of annual commission work plans.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, this is a summary of the various commissions that exist and are in place currently, and some of the commissions have expressed a desire to meet with the city council and have study sessions and are in joint meetings with the council to, in some cases, discuss specific items of interest to the commission, in other cases, I think, just to have that ongoing dialogue. It's my understanding that in the city of San Carlos, that such meetings have been held in the past by way of study sessions prior to city council meetings, that certainly hasn't happened in the past year. We have had specific requests from the Economic Development Advisory Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission now to have joint meetings. The EDAC Commission has been recently reformulated, and I think that commission has indicated a desire to have a joint meeting so that there can be some discussion about what their role will be, and as we're preparing an economic development plan, as we have a couple of projects of interest come forward, including the hospital project, they're interested in having some dialogue. I know that the Parks and Recreation Commission has also expressed some interest in discussing with the council revenue measures or potential revenue measures that might be of interest to finance future park capital improvements. We've outlined a series of different options within the staff report that the council might consider, ranging from just scheduling a couple of, or a study session, and maybe a special meeting one night where we could meet with two or three of the boards and commissions as one option. Secondarily, as an alternative to that, you may ask that each board and commission create a work program or a more detailed agenda for those meetings when they should occur at perhaps a later date. The third idea that has come up is the thought that council members could form ad hoc committees and attend meetings with boards and commissions, break up, divide, and conquer to some, to some degree. We don't have a real good sense of whether or not that would be well-received by the boards and commissions or not. We certainly think that they would appreciate that kind of dialogue rather than not having some opportunity for that liaison or dialogue to occur. The recommendation before you is that we have a special meeting to meet with just the EDAC and the Parks and Recreation Commission, because they specifically asked for an opportunity to meet with the city council. If you were going to add a third commission to that list, Parks and, or, I'm sorry, the planning commission seems like a logical addition to that, and I think that that could possibly all occur in one evening if the, if the council so wished. But we really put it on the agenda so that we could hear from you in terms of what your preferences might be for, for this kind of liaison or dialogue with the boards and commissions that exist.
Okay.
Well, I would, I would be in favor of meeting, I think the difficulty would be meeting before our regular city council meeting because of people's schedules. I hate to add another night, but at least if there's another night, there's an opportunity for people to go home from work and be able to meet. I think it'd be very problematical, at least it appears to me in this year and possibly in the next, into the future, to meet much earlier than we've been meeting and get a full group of people able to come. So, I mean, my preference would be have it on a special night.
If, I could kind of weigh in here. It seems, historically, we've done these, generally, we've taken like an hour, an hour and a half at the beginning of the meetings to have a joint meeting. And so we don't necessarily have to start at 4:00 to have a joint planning commission, city council meeting, we could start at 7:00, plan to meet, have a joint session through 8:30, and then start the council, the regular agendas, council at, you know, some later time, depending on the time. I started going through these and thinking, you know, there isn't really one size fits all for each one of these boards and commissions, so the meeting, for example, with the youth advisory committee might be quite different than the one with Parks and Rec, given the issue around, you know, turf and the lack of field space and some of the other programs in town. So I would almost recommend that we look at responding to the two requests we've had, which is EDAC and the Parks and Rec Commission, and schedule a period of time at the beginning of, like a study session, at the beginning of one of our meetings, with those to push it back to those commissions to put together the agenda, whether it's they would like to have input from council, or they'd like to have just the ability to sit there and talk about, you know, what are our thoughts about X, Y, Z issues in town. And then depending on those, if there's others, open it up, put the invitation out there that the council's, you know, willing to meet with these. So if there are requests for council and, or joint meetings, that we take those on, sort of on a case-by-case basis. The, I know you brought up planning commission, when Bob and I sat on, or, council member Grisilli and I sat on planning commission, it was very helpful, actually, to have a joint meeting with council, more around things like policy decisions or recent decisions that were made at the planning commission that may have gotten overturned or changed by council, and just better understanding the council's policy direction on those. But it doesn't seem like we've seen much come forward from planning commission, so I would push it back to the planning commission to ask them if indeed they would see value in that.
The only, I appreciate your comment, it'd be great to have it on the same night, but we've already, earlier in this meeting, already set up study sessions, I mean, Mr. Lewis is going to say that, but I beat him to it, I think, study sessions for the next nine meetings or so. So I don't know where we're going to get all this, I mean, I appreciate your point, but I don't know where we're going to get that extra time.
Well, I think, I mean, I thought we only set up like two study sessions.
I thought we set up eight or nine.
Well, it ranges from five to 13, depending on whether or not we...
There you go. Pick a number, any number.
You're both right.
We have five that are scheduled, if we schedule the other eight commissions as regular study sessions, that would be 13. But we have five that are scheduled, there, I think, are eight or nine meetings left between now and February.
Well, I would concur then with Councilmember Teagle Doherty's comment, if we have the time to do that, that would be, you know, that would, that would be fine with me, and hopefully our agenda could be lightened that evening, if that ever could happen, and then I'd be fine. But I was, I was going on the earlier discussion we had, and I thought all of those meetings were pretty much booked up for the next three months.
Well, and that's, again, that's kind of why I push it back, like, if we've gotten requests from two commissions, clearly they'd like to have some time to get together with council, and it doesn't necessarily need to be in a formal environment, we could do it, you know, in the library room upstairs, in the room 207, or, you know, some, I guess room 207 may not even exist anymore, haven't been up there recently. But, I mean, there's, there may be ways that we can, that we can accommodate this and accommodate the immediate needs or the immediate requests, and then schedule the other ones off through the balance of 2007 as well.
That's fine.
Kind of get caught up.
The other part, again, I don't mean to be, it seems like I'm disagreeing with what you're saying, and I don't mean to be, but also, it's important, I think, that we have the transparency, that when we're upstairs, if we go to another room, it's not going to be a public, it's going to be a public meeting, but it's not going to be televised. So, I mean, that's just another issue to possibly think about.
Our meetings didn't used to be televised.
I understand what they are now, so.
Yeah, I just want to point out, if we stay on the rule that we're on tonight, we could have these meetings the last hour of the meeting. Let me make a couple of, after being on the Park and Rec Commission for five years, I think we had two meetings with council in the five years I was on Park and Rec. What we all know can be difficult about working on a, on a five-person council or commission is, is sort of making headway, getting, you know, consensus can be difficult and can take a lot of time and so forth. So I know at times that many of us on the Park and Rec Commission, and different commissioners on different commissions that I've talked to, would appreciate some sort of a work plan and some sort of direction from council so that, I mean, they can just work more efficiently. They know what sort of the general desires are, they know what we're sort of, they might be able to make headway on, they can organize discussions and conversations and plans. So I really would like to see us try to move these things along. It's more time, but I would like us to actually divide and conquer and try to do as many of these things as possible. The only difference with what Councilwoman Ingle, Teagle Doherty said, I would, can we lose the hyphen? No, just kidding, excuse me. And is that rather than just come with an agenda, I know it, sometimes for me, it was even difficult to come up with agenda items on the commissions, is actually to focus it on a work plan, the thing I liked in this proposal is that the commission actually has to have a discussion, say, what do we want to get done in the next 12 months? And that focuses the conversation, and then it also focuses our conversation with, here's what we're looking to accomplish, and we can sort of react to something at that first meeting. So I would actually encourage us to take to the next step, and when we have that joint meeting, is perhaps for the commission that's interested, for directions, to come in with a work plan, could be a one-year work plan, it could encompass more than that, but certainly within that next 12 months, so we know what they're up to and what they, they want to pursue. So that's, that's one thing. In looking at the alternatives, I thought that one, two, and four would all, would all be possibilities and would all be good. So to establish, authorize staff to work with the boards and commissions to establish draft work plans for 0708 and present those plans at the joint meeting would be great. To schedule the meetings sort of as necessary, but I know that we haven't had any yet, I don't believe. So it seems to me that we should get started on a schedule of trying to get these meetings done, joint meetings together, and if, because of scheduling reasons, we're not able to accommodate some of the needs, then we look at an ad hoc situation. It's like, let's get two council members, work with the commission, so they can start to make forward progress on the issues that they're concerned about, bring back to council, so they know that they're working on things that are going to have purchase with council and things that we'd like to see done.
I would, I would agree with Councilmember Lewis in terms of the, of the work plan as the basis for the activity of the, of the commission. I really think that in the past years, we've sort of sat around the table and we've talked about nice things, and then we've dismissed each other, and I'm not too sure anyone moved off anywhere they were. So I do think that having the ability to discuss a plan, to approve a plan at the council level, and then get the report back periodically would be very helpful. We're at a point, though, in terms of transition with some of our department people, where it's really not practical to do that at this point. So I think ultimately we should come with a plan idea, bring a plan forward, and as staff is available, and that can be done probably in the next year that we schedule it. But I do think we have two commissions now that do need some help and do need some attention, one being EDAC and the other being Park and Rec. They both ask for our ear, and I believe we should give the two of them. And the question I would have to, you all do want to schedule a separate meeting, or should we try to fold it into the night of our regular meeting?
I would tend to defer to our city manager who, and our city clerk that set the agenda to make that determination, because it seems to me that if, I don't have any, I don't think any of us have any visibility of what's coming over the next couple of months. My inclination is between the fire assessment and potentially PAMF coming, or the application coming forward, we could be quite busy, but there may be some opportunities where we're busy for a couple of meetings and then other meetings we're not quite so busy. So I guess I would defer to staff to kind of do what you do best and just sort of say, hey, let's figure out how we can either carve out an hour and a half, or, you know, sort of however much time, whoever the staff liaison is to that committee feels like it would take. You know, so if they want two hours of council time, tell us they want two hours of council time, and tell us, you know, so we can prepare, what, you know, what issues they'd like to have help with, what input, what policy, what, what their expectations are from us as a council out of those meetings, and then we can allocate time accordingly. And if it needs to go to a special meeting, I think it's just, that would be, my preference would be for two separate evenings, rather than try to combine them all into one, because I think whoever starts first is, from what I've seen, those, they may tend to go over, and then the second committee may actually get a short shrift if they're, that 9:00 to 10:30 shift, for example, rather than the 7:00 to 9:00.
Any other comments from other members?
My only concern would be doing on council meetings to start with, at least, is that because it's been so long since we've met with these commissions and committees, that if we could, I don't know how much time we could, you know, give to it on a given meeting night. In other words, if we set an hour, that won't be enough time. And a couple hours, given our history this year, certainly, that's going to really have, I mean, have, H-A-L-V-E, the amount of work that we're able to get done on a given meeting. So my two cents would be to start with, with EDAC and Park and Rec, let's do it on a special night, start with.
Member Grisilli?
That's the first thing I thought of, again, just backing up, because we just haven't been efficient. And I don't know with some of the things that were coming up, I don't know what the, as Councilwoman Teagle Doherty said, I don't know what's coming up, that we're going to even have a block of time, an hour and a half, to allow for that. So that's my concern. And I certainly don't want to cut people off, like Councilmember Lewis said, that's not fair, or no, do I want to be here at midnight trying to decide some major item?
So I think we conclude that we're probably looking at a special meeting, and perhaps if we time ourselves properly, we can deal with both EDAC and Park and Rec. And perhaps that could be a Monday night, since our Monday And perhaps that could be a Monday night, since our Monday nights are sort of clear anyway, if, if one of the other commissions are not meeting on Monday. And you all could set the, the timing and let us know.
Planning commission's the other Monday nights in this room, right? So Monday nights probably may not...
For planning commission, yeah. Unless they have a lighted...
But if, if you want to televise the meetings, then...
I was only saying if we were going to have it in a regular council meeting. If we're not having a regular council meeting, it's not going to be televised.
Okay.
To me, it doesn't have to be Monday nights, not, not only is it football season, no, I'm just, but it, to me, any Monday through Thursday night would work for me, so I would necessarily restrict it to Monday nights, just for my advantage.
Would you prefer to have it televised, or does it make a difference to you?
It doesn't make a difference to me.
Doesn't make a difference, but if it's, if it's going to be at a council meeting, I think we should meet here.
Right. Okay.
The, the challenge, what I, what I'm hearing is that we will try to schedule a special meeting.
Right.
One night, we'll cover EDAC and the Parks and Recreation. I think the staff has a good idea as to what primary issues are for, for each of them that we can list on, on the agenda. The, the difficulty with doing it here, I mean, it, it's great for the television and the audio and, and sound and the like, the difficulty is, is getting people around a table and, and having a dialogue. I mean, I think it works for the study session, just involving the city council, because you all can, can talk amongst yourselves. It's, it's difficult, I think, given the size of the day, us to have the planning commission and the city council meet jointly.
I think I'd prefer room 207 or an equivalent room, so we can all get around the table and be eye to eye. That means we don't televise, however it is, an open meeting, folks can come and, and join us if they choose. And I think we're talking here about, about issues that are of some concern to the commissions. And, and being able to, you know, to get at that level and, and work out the detail is the most important result of all this. The communication through the process, through the public, comes later as, as issues come forward, so.
With that in mind, we'll, we'll go to work checking with your schedules first, and then I'll try to set up a meeting as soon as possible.
And, and Councilmember Lewis is available Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I think he said.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Item 12A has been continued to a date uncertain, and the next item is adjournment with the agreement of my fellow council members that like to adjourn our session in, in memory and tribute to those thousands of people that died five years ago at the World Trade Center, Pentagon in Pennsylvania, and, and other situations. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.